Yeah. 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 And I, you know, I don't want to have a, something personal to do with it. So I'm on one of the, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you gotta be better.
Be good at some point.
Yeah.
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 And that's usually, you know, kind of how I'm, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's just, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna like, yeah.
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 Okay. Call the order. You wanna take it from here, City Attorney?
Um, we held a closed session tonight and there was no reportable action. You adjourn the special meeting?
Okay. Do we, we don't, do we need to vote for that to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then we will move on to the regular meeting, starting at six oh nine on April twenty first. Uh, call the order. No more posting on the agenda. You already mentioned that?
Uh, it'll be, um, I'll just repeat it just for the record. Uh, so the agenda was posted on Friday, April eighteenth at ten thirty seven A.M.
Okay. All right, we'll move right into the pledge of allegiance, and that will be by Councilmember Ramirez.
Joining me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Uh, so we were going to have invocation tonight, but I don't believe Pastor Himansh made it here, so we are going to pass. Up on that one. Okay, moving along. Do you, you wanna do roll call again, or okay? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi. Councilmember Hilton. Councilmember Marx. Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Bozzo.
Here. Okay, orders of the day, uh, like in the past three or four meetings. We will have a seven o'clock, well, regardless of what topic we're on, at seven o'clock, we wanna start our discussion on districting, like we have done in the past few weeks. So we will do that at seven o'clock. So I may jump around on the agenda to keep with that schedule. Moving on to items. Number one point seven, employee introductions. I believe that will be taken care of by Chief Espinoza.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, members of the community, very glad to introduce the three new additions to our leadership team. We've had the opportunity to promote two to the rank of sergeant and one to the rank of captain. We will start off with Diana Casey. Diana has been with the organizations for the last twenty-two years, held specialized assignment as an anti-crime investigator, hostage team negotiator, major accident investigation team, field training officer, and currently a mounted enforcement unit officer alongside her trusted mount Winston. Outside of work, Sergeant Casey enjoys spending time with her husband Joel and their three children, Roman, Mia, and Lily. She also values the time she shares with her mother, two sisters, and brother. She credits her promotion to the unwavering support of her husband and family, who helped manage things at home while she studied, and as well to her friends who encouraged her and motivated her and pushed her to keep going. Sergeant Casey is honored to continue serving the city of Gilroy and its citizens in her new role, just as she has proudly done so for the last two decades. Please help me congratulate Sergeant Diana Casey.
Good evening, thank you. Um, my plan will be the same, to continue serving the city with the same dedication and integrity that I've had in the last twenty-two years. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next up, we have Daniel Panetta. He is also being promoted to the rank of sergeant. He was born here in Gilroy and graduated from Gilroy High School in two thousand and five. He started off as a police explorer with the Gilroy Police Department at the age of sixteen and spent eight years in the U.S. Army Reserves. He then was hired by the Oakland Police Department, where he spent two years before returning to us here at the Gilroy Police Department as a sworn police officer. Sergeant Panetta has been with the Gilroy Police Department for almost fifteen years and has held positions as a supervisor on patrol, gang narcotics investigator with the anti-crime team, domestic violence, missing persons detective, assistant team of the regional SWAT team, and instructor of defensive tactics team, member of the honor guard, and as a peer support member. Sergeant Panetta looks forward to his new assignment and is thankful for this opportunity. Please help me congratulate Sergeant Daniel Panetta.
Good evening and thank you. Uh, truly grateful for the position and definitely looking forward to, uh, my new position, especially in the city of Gilroy. Thank you.
Finally, we have Lamont Tony, who's being promoted to the rank of captain. Lamont Tony is a dedicated member of the Gilroy Police Department with a strong foundation in modern policing, over decadent of service to the Gilroy community. He earned his degree in criminal justice from California State University East Bay. Shortly after graduating, Lamont was hired by the California Department of Assurance as a fraud investigator and completed the police academy in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and eleven, Lamont joined the Gilroy Police Department, where he served in some very key roles, as assignments have included patrol the anti-crime team as a gang investigator, supervisor of the defensive tactics unit, a position held for approximately ten years. He spent the last twelve years on the department SWAT time, SWAT team, with six of those years as a team leader. He's also served as a member of the ceremonial honor guard, and in addition, Lamont shared his expertise as a part-time instructor at the police academy, teaching arrest and control tactics. Throughout his career, Lamont has held ranks as a corporal, sergeant, and most recently, serving the last four years as the administrative sergeant, part of the administrative team, and notably, his accomplishments are designing, implementing the quality-of-life officer program, supervising the field training program, acting as a department's public information officer, and leading recruitment and hiring efforts. He is married to his wife Bernice, and together they are the proud parents of three children. Please help me congratulate Captain Lamont Tony.
Thank you for that introduction, I really appreciate it. I am very excited for this opportunity. Uh, I bring in, it bring an enthusiastic and a can-do attitude to the position. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the community in its new capacity. Um, at a time where our department is going through significant change, with our, with Chief Espinoza retiring next month, I am very happy to be entrusted to help lead our organization into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item two, ceremonial items. Uh, we have none this evening. Item number three, this is council correspondence. I don't believe we have any this evening. And item number four is, uh, public comment. So any members of the public on items that are not on the agenda, but whom would wish to speak? Do we have any?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have four speakers. First is Robert Butler, followed by Elaine Gooding.
Thank you, Robert, go ahead, you have three minutes, please.
Hey, I'm happy to be here today. So, um, what I'm talking about, first I'm gonna introduce myself a little bit. Uh, I came to Gilroy in nineteen eighty-four. I worked at the Gilroy Unified School District, and also I worked at the park district, um, after-school programs. Right now, I'm a retired teacher of thirty-seven years. I'm also a part of now the art exhibit, um, the Gilroy Center for the Arts. I'm a board member there, so I volunteer there. And we have an art exhibit there, and right now it's featuring Santiago Moreno. He's one of Gilroy's own, and it's fantastic, so if you haven't seen that. And what I'm getting into is, in the past, I sponsored some uplift concerts, and these concerts I've done for six years straight. And the, the money that's raised, I've been, um, helping the Gilroy Compassion Center, which now is actually the South Dolly, um, compared, South County Compassion Center, and we help the, um, unhoused. So I'm promoting that today, and what I'm trying to do is invite people who don't know that on May second, I'm giving another concert. And this concert right here on May second is gonna be with a male chorus, and that's kind of unique too, because it's gonna be like thirty men singing. And it's a first here, and then it'll be coming down here in, in Gilroy on May second, is the Cathedral Men's Choir, and, um, I have, uh, ju, uh, cards for you if you want to, um, to see those. The last thing is, we also have at the Gilroy Center of Arts, a kids drama club. So this is the fourth time that I sponsored the drama club, too. The drama club has two sessions in the summer. The session is once in June, and from June, um, June thirtieth to July thirteenth, and then the second session is July and August, and there's information on that also. Um, about the, the concert, it's also gonna be sponsoring a, a new artist that's here. He's a world-renowned artist, his, his name is Paul Bykott, and he now lives in Gilroy. He has over two hundred and eighty paintings, and he's been astounded all over the world, so he will be on May second being introduced there, too. So what I'm saying is, I need your support, and if you haven't come to one of these uplift concerts, it's gonna be a gift if you do. And supporting our kids and our youth. I'm a thirty-seven-year, um, teacher, I've helped kids my whole life, and the drama club is something that they could be interested in, too. So, I'm finished with that. This was kind of nerve-wracking.
Thank you, you did great.
But I did, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Elaine Gooding, followed by Eric Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Elaine Gooding. I moved here in nineteen sixty-three. I know a lot of these people here. I grew up here, my parents had fruit stands, and I wear Gilroy garlic, garlic, gotta go. Anyway, I'm here to thank the City Councilmembers for last year. Um, I live at the Garlic, uh, Garlic Farm RV Park. I've been there for fifteen years. A, another company bought us and kind of took over and haven't been doing a very good job. But, uh, City Council came out, uh, they're off of Ball Stuck. There was a lot of homeless people, trash, garbage, and our children get right on the bus, uh, right there and stuff. So thanks to Dionne and Carol, they came out, we talked, they got things rolling over here, now it is all clean, we don't have that garbage coming over. We pay unfortunately more money than they do over on Thames Street at the, at the Mobile Home Park, and they keep raising our space rent. And if you've got a trailer, which, you know, they let so many of the tiny homes, which we're happy, because it's supposed to be low income, but it hasn't turned out that way. They seem to be raising our stuff constantly. Uh, unfortunately, as Dionne knows, we brought in the book, he, uh, the residents for us, but we're not protected by it. We brought in, uh, Scott, um, Blake, Blattick from Project Sentinel, and he again stated that we, even though they have a book that's supposed to cover us, we're not, even though there's over a hundred RVs versus, uh, the spaces, a hundred and fifty-eight spaces there, and forty-something is the tiny homes, but most of those people are in the category of eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. That's not low income. And we're getting penalized as far as raising our rent constantly. I've looked into several different places, but I need your help, which Dionne was there, he saw them and looked at the book and talked with Scott, and trying to figure out where we can fall. We're elderly people, I'm in my seventies, and I'm one of the younger ones there. So it's just trying to protect them, when you're only making like twenty to thirty thousand a year, that, that, you know, they're paying, we're paying, like I said, more, and then we get less, but we have no protection from either, uh, the city or, and you guys kind of let them in here. So I'm just looking for someone to help direct us in the right way, as not to cause conflict, because their attitude is, if you don't like it, move. Well, if you drop six thousand dollars, sure, I could move, but I've got a forty-five-foot fifth wheel. I've had it for ten years, I wanna pay it off before I have to move or die, whichever comes first. But again, it's low income, and I don't know how they qualify that. So I don't know if my time's up, it's almost there, but anyway, thank you, and please, I know Dionne and Carol has my number.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you, God bless.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next speaker is Eric Rodriguez, followed by Emily Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Eric Rodriguez, I'm with Silicon Valley Clean Energy. SBC is your community's provider of electricity. We buy clean power, the PG&E delivers to over ninety-five percent of the community's residents and businesses. Since our inception in twenty sixteen, we've invested nearly four billion dollars in new energy, new renewable energy and energy storage projects. We have a tremendous board of directors, and we are so thankful to Councilmember Hilton's leadership on our, as a board member. Councilmember Hilton also serves on our legislative ad hoc committee and provides great policy direction to our C.E.O. and staff. I'm here tonight to share information about the actual impact of your participation, SBC, and, and the, and the actual impact it's actually had in, uh, in this last year, twenty twenty-four. In the past year, customer bills in Gilroy were, were over one point three million dollars lower, directly due to your membership in SBC. That's one point three million dollars the local residents had to spend on other priorities and other investments. While in twenty twenty, the twenty twenty-four value is high, the community savings number grows to seven point three million dollars over SBC's lifetime. I've shared this handout with you, um, I just hold it up, um, detailing these numbers. Despite our savings, we know many people struggle to pay their energy bills. In addition to our discount for all customers, we offer additional discounts to low-income customers that reduce their bills by thirty-five percent and provide resources on saving energy and bill relief. In addition to bill savings I mentioned, we also continuously, continually invest in our communities. Rebates of over eight thousand dollars are available to all customers upgrading their homes. In addition, Gilroy has obtained over two hundred, two hundred sixty thousand dollars in grants from SBC for an E.V. charger and two E.V. trucks for your public works department. Thank you for your attention this evening. We, you can always learn more about, uh, SBC, uh, SBC, uh, clean, SBcleanenergy.org.
Thank you, Eric. And our final speaker is Emily Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Bozzo, council members and city staff. My name is Emily Miller, and I serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission here in Gilroy. I'm here tonight to voice my strong support for our budget request and work plan items our commissions submitted for the, for consideration in the upcoming budget cycle. Our community continues to grow, and with that growth comes an increasing demand for high-quality, inclusive, and accessible parks and recreation opportunities. The priorities outlined in our work, work plan, including investing in dedicated pickleball courts and maintaining and improving our existing park infrastructure, directly reflects the needs and interests we've heard from residents. In fact, a recent change.org petition advocating for dedicated courts in Gilroy has almost two hundred signatures in three days. We're building on the important groundwork the last commission who conducted, who conducted research to identify the most suitable location for dedicated courts. Um, which was Los Anamos Park, if you guys didn't know that. I think it was submitted to you guys maybe two meetings ago, you guys, it was handed down. Um, we think Los Anamos Park would be a great location for pickleball courts, not only because of the existing infrastructure and available space, but the benefit it would bring to the park, including increased activity and consistent use of the space, which could significantly improve park safety and even drive local economic development by giving Gilroy the opportunity to host regional tournaments. The Parks and Recreation Commission is proud to support a work plan and budget that reflects both the, both the present and future needs of our community. Thank you for your time and continued support for Parks and Recreation in Gilroy.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, we have one additional speaker, Ron Kirkish.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. I'm glad that, uh, we've have a visitor from the Silicon Valley Green Energy Project. When, uh, this council voted at the time to approve, uh, this business, uh, it was sold as a green energy solely. It was gonna be wind and solar, and that's it. If you, some of you can recall, Mr. Hilton, or Councilman Hilton, uh, several months ago, said that Silicon Valley Clean Energy now has signed contracts with other, uh, energy providers that include natural gas and, uh, uh, materials like logs and other things to create electricity. That kind of went unnoticed. At the time, I, I wanted to have the council suggest bringing somebody from Silicon Valley Clean Energy to speak about this. Why are, is it necessary for them, when they promised that they would only provide, uh, green energy, have they switched and said, we're gonna now provide energy from natural gas and from biomaterials? What changed and why did they do this, is what I wanna know, and I think the community has a right, has, uh, has, deserves to know why they switched. Thank you.
There are councilor speakers. Thank you very much. Okay, we will close public comment, and we'll move on to item number five, uh, reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes, as, uh, the representative for Gilroy on the Libraries Joint Powers Authority, uh, we recently met, uh, I'm on the Finance Committee, and our library is in excellent financial shape. We have over a hundred million. We have over $100 million in reserves and we operate within our budget almost every single year. And I say that because recently there's been stuff out there that our funding is being cut by the government and we're not going to be able to provide services. This is a lie. It's a straight-up lie. Our libraries are funded by the taxpayers of our district. And I believe there's nine libraries in our district and that's who funds our libraries. We get a little tiny bit of money from the federal government here and there when we apply for a grant, but the money comes from us, the taxpayers. And so our libraries are fine and they're healthy and there's nothing to worry about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Klein?
Nothing to report.
Okay, I have nothing to report this evening. Moving on to item number six, the consent calendar. I would like, excuse me, I'm sorry. Any ex parte communications on the consent calendar? Okay. Sorry. Any public comment, please, on the consent calendar?
We have no speakers at this time.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on items 6.1 through 6.4 of the consent calendar.
I move to approve.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I have a motion by Councilmember Ramirez and a second by Councilmember Klein for approval of the consent calendar, items 6.1, 6.2, 6.3 and 6.4. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Okay, moving on to item number seven, bids and proposals. 7.1, award a three-year contract to Honeywell International, Inc. for HVAC maintenance services in the amount of $620,878. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and members of the community. This item before you this evening is for our HVAC maintenance services contract. Our recommended action for council tonight, there's a bug up here getting me, is to approve a three-year agreement with Honeywell International for citywide HVAC services. This is for preventative maintenance, repairs, part and on-call emergency services. And then the action also provides an option for the city to extend the agreement for up to two additional years, which would be based upon service and responsiveness. As long as those remain high, we would have the option to continue the contract for those two additional years. Just a little background information, our city-owned buildings have over 160 pieces of HVAC equipment that need regular maintenance. We do have aging facilities and aging equipment and that equals more frequent repairs and replacement of parts. We do have limited staffing in facilities that have this expertise, so we do supplement our internal city staff with contractual services. And this requires specialized HVAC training and skills and then those folks can provide that preventative maintenance diagnostics and repairs on all of those pieces of equipment for us. Through the General Services Administration competitive bid process, Honeywell is an approved HVAC service providers available to local agencies. They were vetted during this bid process. They have competitive rates. The statewide GSA bid process almost forces the vendors to provide competitive rates in order to be awarded and to be placed on this list so they can get volume of business by agencies who are looking to secure these services. Their rates are locked by the GSA process to June 22, 2030, and this company is based out of the Bay Area. We have some history working with Honeywell. In fact, have worked with them for the last 20 years. They have been very responsive to assisting the city of Gilroy with our equipment, especially our aging equipment. They have provided excellent service to us, both in the preventative maintenance area as well as repair work that we've needed. The funding impact of this three-year agreement, it ranges from $171,259 in year one to $188,813 in year three. And we've also included a contingency for unexpected services. We will only use that if needed and that's only if replacement parts and repairs exceed the annual fee. The total cost over the three years is $620,878. We do have funding set aside in the facilities fund for this service and we plan to incorporate this, if approved, into the fiscal year 26 budget, which is under development at this time. Upon council approval of this, we would finalize our contract documents and have those executed by the city administrator. We would direct Honeywell to continue servicing our HVAC equipment and will continue to evaluate service and responsiveness of this company to ensure we're getting the best service possible to keep our buildings up and going and everything running smoothly. So happy to answer any questions. And Walter Dunkle, our facilities and fleet superintendent, is also here if you have any technical questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you for answering my questions that I emailed you. I do have one additional. Do you, in this facilities fund, do you have funding set aside for replacing? Is there a replacement plan that's ongoing for this aging? You referred to the aging.
Only in the form of CIP projects where we've identified that a particular facility, like we recently talked to you all about Old City Hall and that equipment needing to be replaced, that was done in the form of a CIP project because it involves significant resources and funding and design work and construction. So that's how those kinds of things would come forward. But we don't have a full replacement schedule for every piece of HVAC equipment in the city. We identify things as we're coming up with problems and issues and things working down.
So it's just a reactive, not a proactive approach?
Correct. Because of our funding and available resources, we try to build up funds in there for capital projects, but that's all we've been able to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
I was going to ask, can we get a report back next year at this time as far as what the response has been and, you know, staff's overall feeling with, you know, just what they're responding to the needs?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilmember Bracco?
Did this go out to bid?
We used the statewide GSA bidding process, so they ran the bid process at the state level. And then because we're a local government agency, we can tag onto the bid process that was already completed at the state level.
Okay, where are they out of?
They're out of the Bay Area, based out of San Bruno.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bracco, we call it piggybacking and the charter allows that we can do that. We can contract with other local or state agencies specifically for this purpose. So they do one bid and then we get to benefit from this broader bid base and we get the benefits financially.
Sometimes the vendors base on economies of scale because they hope that they will get business from more local government agencies or municipalities by putting forth a competitive bid in the GSA process. So we believe we get the best rates that way.
But it would seem to me if you have a local bid where you get companies, you know, Gilroy, Morgan Hill, Watsaville, San Jose, because San Bruno, you're going to pay a guy to drive from San Bruno to Gilroy on an emergency situation in traffic, it's eating up all the money just driving time.
Walter can answer that because I don't.
The person that services our city, he's fairly local. I believe he's out of Hollister, which is closer.
Do they have an office in Hollister?
No, that's just happens to be where he lives. They have offices. Honeywell's a big company. They have offices in.
And the service guys drive home in the service van, the people drive home in the service vans and they manage an area.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
And the prevailing wage is all based on that HVAC, so they meet that criteria in being qualified through that process with GSA.
Right. Correct.
And just to reiterate, the question, one of the questions I had for you that you answered via email was these on-call, emergency on-calls are not billed extra, they are in the contract.
Mayor incorporate, yeah.
So we're not using the reserves?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It would be anything beyond the annual amount.
I have another question. It might be a point, I just want to make sure that everybody understands. So we did talk about and we had discussions a few weeks ago about Old City Hall, about replacing the HVAC at Old City Hall. And you were talking about that would be capital improvement plan funds, project funds. The difference is, right, we were talking about one location, right? And this, we're talking about, what, 50 locations?
Yeah.
Right, so they're going to service the HVAC at 50 different locations.
160 pieces of equipment.
And some of it, some of it just could be routine.
Yeah.
Routine. The wire got cut outside on the condenser and now air conditioning doesn't work. Someone's got to come troubleshoot that.
And just the ongoing preventative maintenance to keep the systems up and running on a regular basis. And in Gilroy's climate, especially in our summer months, we really do rely upon our HVAC systems. And we've had some challenges when it's gone down and we've had city staff needing to work in facilities or the public needs to utilize a facility and our HVAC has gone out. And so Honeywell has come to bat for us on a few different occasions to help us in those situations.
So in a perfect world, nothing breaks, they don't come.
Correct.
Right, this money's not spent until we have a problem.
Correct.
Well, there's some maintenance.
Yeah, except for the maintenance.
Routine maintenance, yeah.
Yeah, but for repairs. Yeah, they don't repair something that's not broken.
Sure.
And the issue with staffing, because short of staffing, this kind of helps to bridge that.
This augments it, right. This augments it with people with specialized training in the HVAC area. We have four, well, including Walter, five full-time facilities maintenance personnel to service all the facilities in the city.
Thanks. Further questions? Public comment?
There are no speakers at this time.
Okay. Another chance at questions or comments? Okay, I'm looking for some action.
Make a motion to accept Honeywell in the contract?
Okay, so I have a, I have a motion to award a three-year contract to Honeywell International, Inc. for HVAC maintenance services in the amount of $620,878. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Klein and a second by Councilmember Bracco. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Okay, moving on to item number 8.1, introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending Chapter 16.6-1, cardroom table restrictions.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Captain Lamont Tony will be presenting this item.
Okay, good evening again, Mayor, Council members and members of the community. This evening I am introducing an ordinance to amend the Gilroy City Code, Chapter 16, cardroom table restrictions from 10 tables to 12 tables. Staff originally presented the proposed amendment to council on September 9, 2024, asking for a direction. During that meeting, council supported moving forward with the amendment. Just a little background, the city of Gilroy currently has one cardroom, that's the Garlic City Casino located at 8630 St. Cedro Avenue, unit number 100. The owner of the Garlic City Casino, Kai Fuan, reached out to the police department to request to increase their gaming table limit by two as allowed by Assembly Bill 341. AB 341, which was passed on January 1, 2023, allows local jurisdictions to amend their ordinance to increase the number of card tables by up to two additional tables initially and then by two additional tables every four years thereafter, not to exceed 10 additional tables. The proposed amendment would increase the current maximum number of tables from 10 to 12. The proposed amendment was provided to the Bureau of Gambling Control, which is a branch of the Department of Justice. The amendment was reviewed and approved by the Bureau. A similar amendment to this code was made in 2016 when the table levels were increased from eight to 10. As mentioned in previous report to council in September, the current location at St. Cedro Avenue has ample space for additional tables. The management and ownership of the cardroom has been responsive and has maintained a positive relationship with the police department and the Bureau of Gambling Control. They have also been very proactive with their security measures. They have a high-quality surveillance system and have security personnel on site 24 hours a day. The two additional tables, if approved, will primarily be used during peak times on the weekends and during their poker tournaments. We do not anticipate any increase in calls for service from the addition of the two gambling tables as there was no increase notice when the table limit was increased from eight to 10. With that said, staff recommends amending the Gilroy City Code, Chapter 16.6-1 subsection P, increasing the table limit from 10 to 12. Also present this evening is Andrew Fuan, who is the son of the owner Kai and one of the managers of the Garlic City Casino. He is able to answer any questions related to their operation or any other questions related to the business that I am not able to provide. In doing our research on this request, we also looked at our statistics to give you guys a sample of the impacts of the calls for service or services from the police department. And we went back to January 1, 2023 to give you a little over two-year sample size. In that time, we had 115 incidents that were labeled as the Garlic City Casino. Now, that may sound like a lot, but in diving deeper into the statistics and our record management system, incident includes officer-initiated activity such as if an officer goes and does a patrol check, their routine business check, and they log that check at the casino, that's going to be logged as an incident. If an officer does a traffic stop and they either stop in front of the business or maybe they pull into the parking lot and the officer gives out that location, that's going to be logged as an incident. So relative to actual services at the casino, it was very, very low. Of the 115 incidents that were labeled associated to the casino, only 13 resulted in police reports or case numbers. And of those 13, very few of those were of incidents of significance. With that being said, I will turn it over for questions.
Questions for Captain Tony? I just have one question. So I think what I've been hearing you say is that this will make very little to no impact on the services that you guys provide or any of the impact on the Indian City of Gilroy.
That's correct.
I will entertain a motion on the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council.
Sorry, Mayor, Council, we have the public hearing.
Excuse me, so sorry. Any public comment?
No speakers at this time.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to introduce, an introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending Chapter 16.6-1 subset P, cardroom table restrictions.
And to clarify, that's introduce the ordinance by title only and waive further reading. So the clerk doesn't have to read the whole ordinance.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Okay, moving on to item 8.2, public hearing to establish a list of properties subject to the weed abatement program and adoption of a resolution authorizing the fire chief to abate the nuisance arising out of weeds growing and refuse accumulating upon property in the city of Gilroy pursuant to Section 12.51 of the Gilroy Code. Before staff report, any ex parte communications by council? None? Okay, staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and Gilroy residents. Tonight's agenda covers the second step in the annual weed abatement program process. On February 24, 2025, the City Council adopted Resolution 2025-06 declaring weeds and refuse of public nuisance. This included a list of properties with a history of non-compliance. The weed abatement process follows both city and state. The weed abatement process follows both city and state and health safety codes requiring a public hearing before authorizing abatement. This meeting serves two purposes: authorizing the ch- fire chief to abate nuisances such as weeds and refuse and allowing property owners to request removal from the list. All listed property owners received a public hearing notice, abatement instructions and cost information. Property owners were also informed that the weed abatement deadline is May fifteenth. Property owners present tonight may request removal by explaining why their property should not be on the list. The request will be reviewed by the Gilroy Fire Department, the Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Program and City Council. For anyone present, if you wish to speak, please request a time now. I am, uh, Gilroy Fire Marshal Jonathan Crick, and we have Weed Abatement Program Manager, Garrick I O Silbeski, uh, available if needed.
Thank you. So questions for staff typical before any public comment? Is that okay? Cause I just heard him invite folks to ask questions. So questions, okay, so any questions for Jonathan? Yes? Okay, then we will move into public comment?
Uh, we have no speakers at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I will entertain a motion of item eight point two. Do you need to read the whole thing or do you think anything before?
I would read that whole.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain a motion of item eight point two, public hearing to establish a list of. Thank you, thank you. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy authorizing the fire chief to abate the nuisance arising out of weeds growing and refuse accumulating upon property in the City of Gilroy pursuant to section twelve point five one of the Sir- City of Gilroy City Code.
A motion?
I have a motion by Councilmember Klein? I have a second by Councilmember Bracco. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozso?
Yes. The motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Okay, we, um, have eight minutes before our hard stop at seven o'clock, so I'm going to jump to item number ten, introduction of new business, and we're gonna do a quality of life police officer program report.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this item is going to be presented by Captain Luke Powell.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and community members. This is gonna be your annual report on the quality of life officer pilot program, or I'm sorry, this is the permanent program now. Uh, this is gonna be a quick background here, but the program was launched as a pilot initiative in November of two thousand twenty-one. Due to staffing shortages and injuries and then COVID, these positions were not staffed until March of two thousand twenty-two, but it focused on outreach, enforcement, collaboration and collaboration with service providers. It aimed to reduce crime and improve public safety. Po- it obtained positive community impact, which led to a permit adoption in two thousand twenty-four. It wasn't without some challenges along the way. September of two thousand twenty-two, there's a Grants Pass versus Johnson ruling, which limited enforcement of anti-camping laws without shelter beds. In June of two thousand twenty-three, the city adopted a new camping ordinance, which was chapter five, in response to the Grants Pass ruling. In January of two thousand twenty-four, the QL Officer Program was permanently approved by City Council. And then in June of two thousand twenty-four, the Supreme Court overturned the Grants Pass ruling, which restored enforcement flexibility. The QL Officer Program continues to emphasize services based off solutions. Sorry. It's possessed. All right. There you go, sorry about that. All right. Just further clarif- clarification, chapter five of the camping ordinance was adopted in two thousand twenty-three to regulate unsanctioned encampments. Um, this prohibited camping within five hundred feet of parks, schools and pathways. Requires outreach in coordination with service providers and balances public safety with legal compliance. The attached map shows highlighted areas of the city in red. Those can be areas of the city which do not allow camping. And then the yellow, uh, pinpoints, those are gonna be service providers that we offer within our community. Those service providers are Compassion Center, pop-up locations, the Armory, St. Joseph's Family Center and the Salvation Army. These two graphs are gonna show statistical data for the past three years. The first graph is gonna show services offered and enforcement statistics. Again, three-year comparison with calls, total calls for service to the police department, then calls for service related to quality of life issues, how many references we provided to individuals for community-based organizations, how many warnings were given out, police reports taken, arrests and then toes. The second graph is gonna show our cleanup efforts, again, three-year comparison. These can be all clean up, cleanup efforts that happened within Valley Water District property, Union Pacific, City of Gilroy property, private property and then totals at the end. I kinda highlighted in pictures here some of our big, um, cleanups that we did this past year. So here's Christmas Hill Park, a pretty large encampment that was cleaned up. As we all know, Alexander and Eighth was a big one. Um, and then they erected those concrete barriers to hopefully prevent any further encampments. The Wellburn Bridge popped up year after year, uh, but it's currently cleaned. In conclusion, we continue to evaluate the program and its effectiveness. The program's permanent approval reflects a positive community impact. It balances enforcement with service-based solutions and ongoing adjustments ensure compliance and effectiveness. Are there any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Bracco?
Captain, did, uh, do we know how much trash we removed from Ethan Alexander?
I do not have a number for you. I could probably find out to see if we still weigh it or not. We used to in the past. I'm not sure if we did this year, but I can look into that for you.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I have a question, so, um, any questions, Councilmember Ramirez, Klein? Could you talk about the relationship between the quality of, uh, life officers and the service providers?
Definitely. So anytime our officers go out and meet someone that they are not, that are unfamiliar with, they'll always offer services from our community-based organizations. Um, the first line had a list of our service providers in our community, so I have them highlighted here at the bottom. Um, but we always lead with compassion. So the very first step in this process is offering services to everyone in our community that is unhoused. So we work very closely with them on a daily basis.
You guys have stats on things like that, on when you contact and you, when you make referrals?
Definitely. So on this chart, so the referrals is gonna be the third column over there. So you can see progressively from twenty-two to twenty-three, we had quite a bit of an increase. And then this past year, we saw a decline, and that's because we're seeing the same individuals repeatedly. They've already been offered services in the past, so we, we're just not documenting those additional referrals.
Okay, any further questions? Any public comment?
Yes, Mayor, Council, we have one speaker, Ron Kirkish.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council and community. Blight. When we saw the problem at Alexander and Eighth, it was blight. It was bad blight. When we saw the problem on the Benassi problem, uh, property, it was blight, same as the Compassion Center. I would like to say thank you to our police chief, to our council, to the, uh, city administrator for cleaning it up. I must say, though, that it took effort to get attention. And when I say attention, I'm talking about attention from the business owners in those areas. They, they contacted me and said, Ron, can you help us out? And I'll see, and I said, I'll see what I can do. But I was met with derision. I was met with anger. That's not what should be happening. When I bring up something at the request of others, and the reason why they ask me is because I don't have anything in the game. They do. If they get found out by the homeless people or whatever, they'll get their windows smashed or something. So they, they rely on me to help. And so I do wanna say I appreciate Luke, Pedro and the others for their response. But in the future, I wanna see a more positive response from the city, not a negative response. I hope that we can work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Mayor, Council, we have one additional speaker, Maria Aguilar.
Thank you. Um, I think it's great that we have the quality of life officers, but I do think that our money can be better spent in a different way. Um, moving folks from one area to another area isn't bringing us any kind of positive results. Uh, I don't know how much is being spent. I think quality of life is around six hundred thousand dollars and then along, how much is for the cleanup? Um, I think that we should refocus. We should create a different program that gives these folks the services that they need and maybe have them be part of the, the change. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no further speakers.
Okay, any further questions for Captain Powell? Okay, thank you very much. We are, um, taking action, having a motion on this. We are just, uh, receiving the two thousand twenty-four annual quality of life police officer program report. Thank you very much. And that brings us to seven o'clock, so we are going to jump back, as we said before, to, um, uh, item eight point three, excuse me, item eight point three, and I will read it. Hold the fourth public meeting hearing regarding the city's transition from at-large to a district-based election system for the purpose of receiving the democriters' presentation on the transition process. The information received regarding communities of interest in the city, the possible conjurers of six districts, the drawing of maps by redistricting, partners, excuse me, by redistricting, redistricting partners, the re- the review of the map submitted on the city's website and by other means, and the presentation of legally compliant draft maps to the city council for the, for the six new districts as well as the order of reelections for the two thousand twenty-six and two thousand twenty-eight elections. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and get started.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, tonight is the fourth meeting. Um, we'll be going over a lot of things you've already seen. That includes the traditional districting principles that we use to draw maps. We'll go over briefly the public maps and remember, the city council can pull up any public map, um, we can discuss it. We'll go over the draft map specifically. We have a new draft map based off of a public map discussed the last time. We'll go over the public hearing schedule. There is an additional meeting added and then what's next. So first and foremost, this is the list of criteria that we use to draw maps. Um, the first on this list is each district has to be relatively equal in size. And the way that we configure that is we take the highest, um, deviation percentage and the lowest deviation percentage absolute value, add them together. That is how you calculate the total deviation. It needs to be under ten percent. And I'll show you how to do that, um, when we go over draft maps. Next, we have to make sure that the districts are contiguous, uh, so they're whole pieces. We're not going from one part of the city to the next and saying that's district one. Uh, it's gotta be touching. And then we're trying to maintain communities of, of interest as much as possible. This includes things like neighborhoods as well. And then lines should be easy to identify. They should be understandable if somebody is just joining and they look at a map. Uh, the lines that we use, uh, should be, um, understandable. So using those natural boundaries like creeks or main thoroughfares, uh, man-made boundaries, uh, are something we strive to do in this process. And then, of course, keep districts compact. So we're trying to make circles and squares and avoid those funny-looking shapes like ribbons, um, to, uh, ensure we make more compact districts. We have had nine maps submitted since the last meeting. Um, those nine maps that met the seven-day posting period, I believe a couple have been submitted since the posting period, um, that, which means that those maps will be discussed at the next meeting. So any maps submitted prior to a week ago, um, are included in this list of nine. Um, this is in addition to the twenty-seven public maps that were submitted prior to the last meeting. Um, the city council has had access to these maps. They've had the opportunity to review them. So again, any map you wanna discuss tonight, we can absolutely pull it up and see if we can entertain that as a draft map. Let's go into the draft map. So this is draft D. This is based off of the public map H eight, or J H O five. Total deviation here is under that ten percent maximum, um, and we're using very similar shapes we've seen in other maps. So we have an eastern district. We're using Hecker Pass Highway as a divider. So this is the map, um, you know, uh, looking at it from the outside. But when we do an overlay of the map with the, um, the map that was discussed prior, so J H O five versus draft D, we did make some changes. So first, you'll notice in the north, um, the district one and four, that was cleaned up just to make sure that the, this is contiguous. Uh, but the major difference between J H O five and draft D is ensuring we have, um, that extra, um, majority minority district. Um, so some changes were made and, uh, draft, or district five now goes up to, uh, Third Street, um, and then down to Eighth Street. So those are predominantly the changes that we see here. Total deviation, again, it's seven point five percent. Uh, and the way that we calculate that is we take the lowest deviation, so that's negative four point seven, and the highest deviation, that is two point eight. We add the absolute values, seven point five percent. I also wanted to show this map. So this was submitted by the original author. He wanted to resubmit the map, um, based on the recommendation you guys made last time. So this is his, uh, second shot at this map. Total deviation, eight point six percent. So again, it's under that ten percent maximum, um, and again, drawn by the original author. So we can entertain this map as well. Um, it just needs a quick fix in the north to make sure that it's contiguous, but other than that, it's a fine map. Total deviation, eight point six percent. And then these are the maps that you have seen last time. So this is draft A. This again is based off of a publicly submitted map, um, and you'll see the eastern district and then using Hecker Pass as a divider. Uh, when we look at the overlay, you can see the differences between the original map and draft A. So minor changes, um, but, uh, that is there for folks who are interested to see the changes. Total deviation, seven percent. Draft B, again, under that ten percent, uh, total deviation. This creates a north and southeast side, um, districts, um, and again, using Hecker Pass as a divider. And then this is the difference between the original map submitted and the draft map. Um, the changes here were made, uh, simply to ensure that the districts were relatively equal in population. So that sort of creates a little cascade across the map. And then total deviation here is six point eight percent. Draft C, it's not based on a public map per se, but it is based on public testimony. Um, so all of the draft maps are based on some kind of public testimony, either So all of the draft maps are based on some kind of public testimony, either draft maps from the public or it's community of interest testimony. So the idea behind Draft C is that this is a different configuration of how to draw the western side of the city. So again, we still have a north and southeast side, so two districts there. And now we see a different configuration for the west. And here is the overall map. Total deviation, 6.9%. So as I mentioned earlier, it looks like we're going to have an extra meeting, which gives us more time to discuss maps. So instead of selecting a map or two tonight to move forward to the next meeting, we get to have more time. So what I recommend for tonight is we discuss the maps that you like. If there are maps you want to throw out immediately, that can also be helpful as well. So we get to expand our maps by talking about any potential public maps or talk about any of the district or the draft maps. We can pull them up in Districter and draw live if we want to. So it's up to you all on how you want to, I guess, address which maps you like. So the last hearing will now be on May 19th. So next steps, remembering, this is an iterative process. So we're building on the last time. So we can identify the maps that you like and then make changes to it if you see fit. Make possible changes, and we'll bring it back next time, or we can draw live. And then at the next meeting, we'll present you all with updated draft maps and any public maps that come in between now and then.
I would like to open it up for questions first before we jump into that phase. So it looks like you have questions, so go ahead.
I just want to clarify, because what I'm trying to do is, I have created a spreadsheet on the maps, and we had public testimony. We had several people come up and talk about their preferences. We've had emails, phone calls, and so I'm kind of, you know, trying to keep track of that. I do want to clarify, Map A, this time, you, yeah, go back one, one more, go back again. Okay, so on this, it says it's based on ID 290309. And my understanding is that is map JHO7 that was submitted.
That's right.
Okay, because several people talked about they preferred map JHO7. I want to just make sure everyone knows that's still Map A. And then Draft B, I had 293515, but you've got that as 290307.
It should be, I believe it's hashtag Go Gilroy.
Okay, I don't have anyone that has made a preference of it, but I just want to make sure I'm looking at the, so it's hashtag Go Gilroy, you said?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein, do you have some questions?
Questions or comments just on some of the terminology for some of the folks that might be here for the first time, if you don't mind? Posting period. Can you please explain that? And then I might add a little bit how it relates to dates.
Yeah. So under the Fair Maps Act, a law created in 2019, it's a state law. We are required to post any potential draft maps seven days in advance to a public meeting. And that's there, so the public has ample time to look at the maps. And we're not trying to, you know, like, pull a fast one on people. So there is transparency. This is for people to view the maps ahead of time. So if folks submit a map, so a week ago was the deadline. So if folks submitted a map between that deadline and now, we'll have time to discuss that at the next meeting.
Okay, so then for anybody who wants to submit a map for our next council meeting, which is in two weeks from tonight, we'll need to have that map submitted in one week from tonight.
Correct.
Okay, next question I have, if you don't mind, go ahead.
What's the cutoff time next Monday? Is it six o'clock or specifically?
Staff and I have been saying 10:00 AM, just to give us enough time to review the maps and post them. So 10:00 AM next Monday.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next, could you explain for the public and possibly myself, draft map? When does it officially become a draft map?
When you guys say it is, essentially. So we kicked it off with three draft maps based on public testimony and public maps. And then from here on out, it's whenever you guys want to make a public map a draft map. So us kicking it off with three is just a way to start the process. And you are by under no means to use those draft maps if you don't like them. We can entertain different maps. You will not hurt my feelings. So whichever map, again, this is your process. You guys are all the decision-makers here. We're just here to help shepherd the process.
And can you remind the public about that you are adjusting some maps, correct?
Yes.
So as maps comes in and they're off a little bit, can you talk about that a little bit so they know?
Yes, so, and I think, hopefully, the public has seen on the website, there is what we call a Fair Maps Act assessment. It just lets folks know if it's past, you know, the criteria of the Fair Maps Act. So it's what we discussed at the beginning, being, you know, compact, relatively equal in population. So we have a list of whether it fulfills those obligations. If they do not fulfill one of the criteria, there's going to be a red X next to it. If it fulfills it, it'll have a check off. And the public is, if they see that there might be an issue, they can always go back to their map and resubmit it, knowing that they, you know, fixed whatever issue was wrong with it. So that being said, if there is a map that you like that doesn't necessarily fulfill all of the criteria, we can still entertain that map, but just make adjustments to it to ensure that it follows the Fair Maps Act requirements.
Okay, and earlier, speaking of criteria, if you don't mind, earlier you talked about, I believe you talked about the 10% rule. Was that the word? Can you talk a little bit more about it and give some examples for the public?
So here is Draft A. And the way that we calculate total deviation is it has to be under 10%. And that is a requirement, it's Supreme Court precedent. It also ensures that we are, that people are able to advocate equally for themselves and have similar voting abilities. So it's based off of the Supreme Court notion of one person, one vote. So we have to make sure it's under 10%. The way that we calculate that is we take the lowest deviation for a district. So here in this example, A, the lowest deviation is negative 4.2%. And then we take the highest deviation. Here it's 2.8%. We add the absolute value, so just go ahead and get rid of the negative sign. We add the absolute value, and it is 7%. So that is how you calculate total deviation.
Sorry, one more. So you've done this many, many times?
Yes.
And right now, we have how many draft maps?
Draft, so there's A through D, but then we have, what, 36 or something like that, Districter maps, so maps from the public.
Okay. Are you comfortable with the amount of maps that have been submitted and that have been approved?
I am. It's always very encouraging whenever the public is involved. And we, again, like to base our maps off of publicly submitted maps. So we really try to get the public to be engaged as much as possible. And again, just as a reminder, because we do have that extra meeting, the public can continue to keep submitting maps. And if there is a map that's already been submitted that you like, you are more than welcome to email us, testify tonight. Let us know which map or maps you prefer, because I think that would be very helpful for the city council to hear which maps are preferred from the public.
Okay, and just to be clear, I know you've talked about that extra date a few times. So I think there'll be more discussion on that a little bit later. But to be clear, at this point, I don't believe that we are, we haven't discussed yet about the idea of receiving maps into May 19th.
Right.
So it sounds like maybe that you've suggested that we might be doing that, and we haven't agreed to that yet.
Sorry, I meant, it's important for the next meeting.
Yeah.
So it gives you an extra meeting to discuss potential maps. But the next meeting is the most important for people to get their final drafts in.
Yeah, which is in a week from today?
Yes.
At 10:00 AM? Okay, okay, thank you. No further questions by me for now.
So to clarify that, after next Monday, these prepared for the fifth, but there'll be no more submissions after that, correct?
People can always submit maps, but they're, the way that I like to explain it is the earlier you can get it in, the more of an impact you're going to have. So if they wait till after you guys have your lengthy discussion, they might miss out on having that impact. So if folks want to have the largest impact and potentially have their maps selected to move forward, it really needs to happen at the next meeting.
So it needs to be in by the 28th at 10:00 AM?
Yes.
To be considered for the fifth?
Yes.
I get that, so don't wait on it.
Is your mic on, Councilmember Klein? Is your mic on?
Yes. Sorry, I'm not talking directly in it, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so now, please proceed with what you are going to do. I think you were going to show some examples of maps? Is that what you were about to do?
No, but I do know you guys need to open it up to the public as well to hear about that. And then I'm happy to move the discussion into which maps you like. And we can even pull up the maps and make changes if you want any changes to the maps.
Okay, questions?
So, like, there have been a couple of drafts that no one has made any preference to. Could we, like, make a recommendation to pull those away, then?
Yeah, you can whittle it down. That's usually helpful.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we will move into public comment.
Yes, Mayor, Council, at this time, we have one speaker, Joanne Fierro.
Okay, well, make it real simple. I think that the east side should not be split in two, and that would eliminate two of these drafts right here. And I think the JHO5, which is D, and O7, which is Draft A, are still the best two and the most fair, even after the adjustments that were made. And I think there's a lot of people that might agree with me on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Remember, no further speakers at this time.
Okay, Liz, would you like to come back up? Anybody would like to have a, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to add map JHO6.
Okay. Let me pull up Districter. Okay, so this is JHO6. Fairly balanced, it just needs a couple of blocks to be filled in. Just looking at the CVAP. Looks like there are two districts with Latino CVAP over 50. But is there anything about this map that you like?
Well, I don't agree with the east side being home one section, that side of Monterey Street. That's what we have now. And it's like, oh, you can go down the other side of the draft. This one and the last one, you have two, two pieces that incorporates areas on both sides of Monterey Street. Because you look at, like, when it's split down Monterey Street, so when you go, like, downtown, people on one side of the street will be in one district, people on the other side will be in a different district, and they have the same interests. And I live out by the hospital, and I don't think I have a whole lot in common with, like, somebody who lives on the opposite end. I just, that's why I have to sit this long.
If anyone else from the city council wants to discuss this, or we can discuss a different map?
Anybody have any interest in the other map? I know you guys have already expressed interest in the past.
Just to clarify, then, this would be Map E, Draft E, then?
Yes.
Since Deon is pulling it up?
I can, if you guys would like me to, I'm more than happy to turn it into a draft.
Sure, yeah. You guys, I'd like to see it as a draft. It's just a draft? Okay. I have another question, cut it back to the maps, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
So do you, in other cases in other cities, do the consultants, how active are you in drawing maps?
It depends on the city. We try to base our maps off of public testimony. So we don't want to, I mean, we're very skilled in terms of knowing the criteria, anecdotes of what other places have done, but we're not experts in the city of Gilroy. So we really do lean on you guys and the public in terms of how groupings of communities should be made. So that's why we're looking to public maps, and it's why we're looking to you guys on the city council in terms of what you think is fair.
Okay. Any other comments? She's interested. So, so.
Yeah, somebody's pulled a card to speak. We haven't had this turn in yet.
So we're not, so this is not for public comment for this topic?
Okay.
Okay. We can do it.
Okay. The next speaker is Diana Maderas.
Okay, so we're going to reopen for public comment for three minutes, please. And this includes anybody else who wants to do public comment, not just this one. So go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, I just want to say that, Jay, the one that you have right there right now, that would totally divide the Latino community. And those of us who have lived in the east side for generations, we prefer A and D. And as, I know that Mr. Brockle lives in there, but where Brockle lives doesn't really include the east side because he lives, like, in the middle of a field. There's not a lot of city around him. So I think it's only fair that we, that our community stick together, the community of interest of Map A or D. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker, okay? And then we have Gretchen.
Hi there, I'm Gretchen Yoderchak. I live on Santa Inez Court, which is around Bren area. And I personally prefer Map A. And the reason I prefer it is, for me, I like my neighborhood not being linked up with Eagle Ridge. I think I prefer a map that keeps my neighborhood separate from that a little bit. And also, I believe strongly in keeping the east side of Gilroy as one strong And also, I believe strongly in keeping the East Side of Gilroy as one strong vote, voting block. I feel that people in that neighborhood have so many common interests that I would like to see a map represent those interests. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Gretchen Yodershak.
Gretchen Yodershak.
I heard it.
And then we have one more speaker, Andrea Altamirano.
Good evening, Councilmembers. First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. So my name is Andrea Altamirano, and I'm here on behalf of Caras, a community-based organization that works directly with underserved residents across Gilroy. I'm here to speak about the importance of fair and equitable districting. So for far too long, low-income neighborhoods, especially in East Gilroy, have been left out of key decisions. We've seen wealthier areas receive more investment, better infrastructure, and beautification projects while poor communities continue to struggle with district there, lack of service, and limited representation. So districting is more than lines on a map, it's about who gets heard and who gets left behind. So when district lines are drawn to favor certain neighborhoods over others, the result is a city where only some communities thrive while others are overlooked. At Caras, we work with families who feel the disparity every day, immigrant families, unhoused, youth at risk, and working-class residents who deserve a fair voice in shaping their future. So we urge you to commit to a transparent, inclusive redistricting process that prioritizes equity. Every resident of Gilroy, regardless of income or neighborhood, deserves equal representation and access to opportunity. I believe that Gilroy is stronger when every neighborhood is seen, where every voice is heard, where every resident feels like their zip code doesn't determine their future. So let's please draw lines that unite us, not divide us, which would be map A or D. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We currently have no other speakers.
Okay, so let's close public comment. Any further comments or questions for Liz? Okay, so we do have to take a little action tonight on this topic, and I'll explain why. Originally, we were going to conclude this process on May 5th, but after some time, with amount of public input and public interest, the discussion that has happened amongst Council and the public, and since that we had time, correct? We do have time to fulfill this obligation a little bit past May 19th, is that we're considering the idea of receiving maps, as we talked about before, until 10:00 AM next Monday, which we'll be able to submit on the following Monday at the May 5th meeting. And we would like then to have two weeks to still go back and talk with the constituents, and talks amongst ourselves and the public to talk without having to make a decision that night. And it also gives us the chance on May 19th to talk about the rollout of the districts, like which districts will go first and things like that. So that's what's new, so we will be looking for a little bit of, a little, a motion on that. So are there questions about it first?
No, I'll motion.
Okay, so, so the motion is, I'll try to help you, because I'm trying to help myself. But the motion is to move the final decision of districting from May 5th to May 19th. And I have a motion by Councilmember Klein.
Just for clarity, do we need to say anything about, that map's submittal would be still April 28th?
I thought I said that, but map's submittal would be at 10:00 AM on April 28th, which is a week from today. Final map?
Three days before May 5th.
Yeah. Because of the posting period that she talked about earlier, that has to be a week in advance.
Okay, I would second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Klein and a second by Councilmember Ramirez to move the final decision on districting in the city of Gilroy from May 5th to May 19th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brocco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Boto.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Okay, we are now moving on to item 10.2 on the agenda, consideration of a city logo policy. My staff report, please.
Tonight, we're here to look at an item that comes to you prior to bringing a logo policy to you for consideration. We have some items that we'd like to get direction from you on that will inform that logo policy. So first of all, just a little bit of background, included in this logo policy, we're gonna be looking at our city seal. The city of Gilroy logo, we'll also be looking at our police department logo, our fire department logo, and the Gilroy Arts logo. So that's what will all be included in the city logo policy. However, tonight, we're focused more on our city seal and our city logos, so the main logos for our city. The city of Gilroy seal, just as some background, the use of this seal is dictated by the city charter, and examples of use include meeting minutes, agendas, press releases, policy, and official letterhead. So really focused on official business of the city. The city of Gilroy logo, or sometimes we call it the Spice of Life logo, is used for everyday or friendlier communications. So examples include social media, e-newsletters, flyers, postcards, and banners. So more of that neighborhood-friendly communication as opposed to the official, a little bit more rigid communication. Tonight's discussion is gonna be more focused on other organizations using our logo. Typically, when an organization adopts a new logo, they do it with the idea that this will be the identity of their organization. So they don't typically allow other organizations to use our logo because that kind of defeats the purpose. The logo is the identity of the organization. So that's one thing that we're looking at tonight. But to dig in a little bit deeper, why consider a logo policy? Having an adopted city logo policy helps strengthen legal protection should we have an issue with another organization using the logo, which does happen. You might be surprised, but we do have events that try and use it, we have other organizations that try and use it, we've had local sports teams that have tried to use it. So it does happen, and having an established policy helps if they refuse our request to stop using the logo. A policy would help us if we needed to move into more of a legal process there. It also provides the foundation for a cease and desist or, you know, more advanced legal action. It provides clarification on approved uses. So this is more for us internally, to help guide staff in what uses are for the city seal, what uses are for the city logo. And then lastly, it ensures all city departments use the seal and logo in a consistent way. So in this, we're talking about branding, how it's used, the coloring, that sort of a thing, just to make sure that we're all using it consistently. The city of Gilroy logo was approved, and this is the Spice of Life logo, and adopted by the Gilroy City Council in 2008. Following this adoption of the logo, some organizations petitioned the city administrator to use a version of the logo for their organization's purposes. I believe this was intentional. The city administrator approved it, so we're not here to say that was a bad thing, a good thing, but we're here to bring this forward to you to get your input on how you'd like us to deal with it moving forward. So one example of an organization that we believe was provided permission to use a version of the city's logo was the Gilroy Downtown Business Association. And when they first started using it, they used this version that's on the left. So you can see it's changed a little bit, they have the downtown at the top, it clearly says Business Association at the bottom, but the main part of it, the Spice of Life logo, is the city's logo. Now, the Downtown Business Association recently did a rebranding, and they're currently using this new logo that you can see in the center now there. However, they're still using a stylized version of our G, and specifically that garlic bulb that is part of our G and part of that mark. In addition, on their social media, they continue to use the actual G, so a not stylized version, so we see that being used as well. Another organization would be Gilroy Gardens. You can see again, they're using our garlic G in there. This one they're using on their website is also in their signage all across their park, so that's something to keep in mind when considering Gilroy Gardens and how they're using our logo. Another organization is Leadership Gilroy. You can see again, they're using our Spice of Life logo, this time they've added the word leadership at the top to designate that it's Leadership Gilroy. Note on this one that not only is it specifically our logo, but they're also using it a way that's inconsistent with our style guide, because they're using it in a color that's not approved. So the logo in the style guide is only approved to be used in that green color or a white color, so it never should be in a blue, a black, it's supposed to be either the green or the white. And lastly, we have the Gilroy Economic Development Corporation. This one again, while I recognize that the Economic Development Corporation isn't currently organized, they do still have a Facebook page that's live and viewable by the public, and that Facebook page is using this logo. So that's something that we would be looking at with your direction. All right, so implications to consider. Use of the city's official logo, whether in original or altered form by external organizations, presents several concerns, and we'll outline some of these next. One concern is that there's a risk of public confusion regarding the relationship between the city and the organization. So the public may think that the city is the organization running Gilroy Gardens because it reflects our logo. And I will say, we do get emails periodically asking us about ticket prices, about operations of the garden, things like that. So there, it can cause some confusion about the city's relationship, whether we're funding the organization, whether we own the organization, those kinds of things. There is the risk of public assumption that the city endorses the activities, statements, messaging, or viewpoints expressed by these organizations. So should they be making a statement that maybe is not in alignment with the city, that could be problematic, because the public may not know that they don't represent the city, because their branding is so reflective of the city's branding. Third, it just causes a dilution of the city's official voice, so our distinctiveness and our authority is weakened because there are other organizations using that similar branding. And then the last one that we've outlined is that the inconsistent or unauthorized use undermines efforts to maintain a cohesive and professional image. And when we see organizations using the logo in a way that's not consistent with the style guide, it just makes us look less professional. So tonight, we're looking for direction from you. We have three options, or, you know, you can obviously propose another option. So the first one is direct staff to rescind permission for any outside organization that may have previously received permission to use the logo. If you choose this route, staff would work with each of the individual organizations to set a reasonable timeline. We recognize that rebranding takes time and can be costly, and so we'd be looking to the organizations to help us set a timeline that is reasonable and that works for them. The next option would be to direct staff to rescind permission for some of the organizations, but not all of the organizations. So that would be up to you to let us know which ones you'd like us to work with, and which ones you'd like us to maybe include in the policy as an authorized use of the logo. And then lastly would be direct staff to continue allowing all of these organizations to continue using the city of Gilroy logo. And that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Klein? Councilmember Brocco?
I can't believe that we waste our time and resources on this kind of stuff. All of these organizations are all working for the betterment of our city, and now we want to tell them they can't use, I believe the Chamber of Commerce uses it too, don't they?
They recently rebranded, so they're no longer using it.
But I think this is a waste of our time. I mean, you're not giving us any instances where it's been abused, where we would need to change what we're doing, so I'm a no vote on this.
I was just gonna update as far as, I know that Gilroy Economic Development, they're actually closed, I know, it shows on the website, but as a legal side, they're being dissolved as we speak. And I talked to Denise Martin with Leadership Gilroy, there is an issue with the color, but it's on the website only, but everything they use outside of that is the green to stay in compliance with that. But they're also going through the process of rebranding, so they're moving away from using that logo in there. So it really leaves us with Gilroy Gardens and the GDPA. And for me, what they present and provide to the community, you can't put a number on it just because, and I love, I love the logo, I mean, it's a great brand, and, but Gilroy Gardens, you can't separate Gilroy Gardens from Gilroy, you know, in the sense, just like garlic can't be separated from Gilroy. And the same thing with GDPA, they represent so many businesses downtown, and so those two are really important to be able to maintain that. So for me, yeah, having, for future stuff, I see that. The other thing you think about is Shark's Ice, how is that gonna be branded with the Gilroy logo in that sense, you know, because, again, it's Gilroy. So how, looking at that, how you finesse that too, it's just something I was thinking about, just to consider, looking forward. And I know you want a policy so that you can address those who are using it without authorization, I get that part of it too. But in terms of the two that are using it now, I say we consider keeping that as part of that process, so number two. My thoughts.
I'm not a marketing PR person, but I did go through this process both with the YWCA when I was there and the YMCA, and they took a very strict policy with regards to even like how their logo could be next to another logo. I mean, it was very, very specific. Also, if anyone was allowed to use the logo, they were required to use the colors, the font, the whole nine yards, but they had to get written permission for those, and that was mostly like on, you know, flyers where they were partnering together, that type of thing. I can see both sides to this. So you did not mention anything with regards to the seal. Do you see an issue with the seal anywhere?
We do periodically have some outside organizations or persons who use the seal, but as far as I know, nobody's, no organizations have received authorization to use the seal. So currently, we're able to ask them to not use the seal when those issues arise.
And with the, with, I mean, have you just kind of been lucky that there's been kind of a cease and desist, or would it strengthen the city's position if we had a, some kind of, what's the word, just left my brain, policy, thank you very much.
Yeah, so the policy, yeah, the policy strengthens the city's position, it also clarifies our use of it, how we're using it. I will say there are protections already established within federal and state law that allow us to continue enforcing trademark law and things like that, copyright law, in spite of not having a policy in place. So the policy strengthens our position and clarifies our consistent use of it.
So I would certainly support a policy, a strong policy for the seal, and, you know, even with like, you know, internal, external use and how it's, how and when, whatever it's used, I would support certainly the I would support certainly the policy that would require written permission from the city on the logo, but that if they are to use the logo, that it has to comply with our standards of the logo in terms of color, font, size, whatever parameters have been established for that logo. And then that way, you know, it is a decision the city can make moving forward on anyone else that would like to without taking away or rescinding, other than, you know, you have to, you know, requiring those that already have the permission from before to have to follow our parameters.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, thank you. I think Ms. Ramirez hits the nail on the head first on what we're trying to accomplish. We didn't go out looking for stuff to do or people to take logos from, but we get requests for the use of our logo. And once you let one group use that logo, then you better have a brief policy or a reason why you don't let somebody else. We don't have that. And I think there is a fair argument for certain businesses or entities that are using it that they continue on. I also think there's an argument for some of them, it's time that they don't need to use it anymore. So what we're looking from council is direction about what you might want to see in a policy, what are the criteria, but we certainly have a hard time defending when people want to use our logo, we don't have a policy. And second of all, when this was created back in 2008, the prevalence of the internet was not near what it is now, and we see misrepresentations of our logo affiliations with events that are not ours. We didn't bring them up because we don't want to embarrass people, but it is something that happens, and it's something that many people in Rochelle's world, especially cities, are taking very serious now because their name is getting diluted and it creates a lot of confusion. So we're just asking council to say, what's your ideas, what's your thoughts, what, you know, what kind of restrictions and what groups would you might be interested in allowing the use of the logo?
So shall I take a stab at it?
Yeah, sure, please, that's direction, love it.
So, just off the top of my head here, and I'm certainly open to amendments, with regards to the logo, I think that they need written permission, they need to comply with the standards that we have set forth on the logo, and I think that even if we provide permission, if there is any reason that the city feels that they should take that permission back, that they can. With the seal, I think that that needs to be, in fact, when I saw this on the agenda and reading the packet, because I, you know, created on my city email a signature and I put the seal, and then I thought, oh my God, did I violate a rule? But nobody's called me out on it, I don't know if there is a rule, right? And so, you know, if there is some type of policy for that as well, I think it's important that we have that, that we protect the city.
I would agree with that, but I would also say, it's reasonable, if you look at both Gilroy Gardens and GDPA, they're, both their logos are, both of theirs are in compliance with the logo requirements, right? And how they use, no, not at all?
I would say the Gilroy Gardens is, I would say the GDPA is not because it stretches the G, so it manipulates the underlying logo.
They've been creative. They've been creative.
Yeah.
No creative liberties is what I would say.
Councilmember Bracco?
So Rachel, if, say, say somebody takes this here, takes the garlic bulb off the G and moves it over to the Y, could you stop them? Because they've changed it.
Could we stop them?
Yeah.
By common trademark law, I believe we probably could, but I would leave that to the lawyers to determine.
Julie?
I would have to check with our trademark person, because I know we've looked into this before, we've looked into Gilroy Garlic Capital of the World and some of those things, and I, off the top of my head, I couldn't say yes or no.
Okay, so is your motion allowing?
No motion tonight, we're just providing direction.
Okay, what you're talking about, are you, is that allowing like Gilroy Gardens to continue to use it?
If they comply with our standards, and, you know, they have permission, I guess, already, so they'd have to.
Could you grandfather them in? That's the question to ask, I think that's what he's asking.
I would, yeah, I-
As long as they're using it accordingly.
I think, I would be okay with them grandfathered in as long as they go with our colors, our, you know, not stretching out the logo, all that kind of stuff, yeah.
I'd support that.
Yeah, I'll just leave a couple of comments, just my impression, when I was watching some of the examples that you put up, and I had the exact, you know, feeling maybe as Councilmember Bracco, I thought, after this many years, we're going to ask to pull them back, you know, but then you did bring up the Leadership Gilroy one, and I thought to myself, man, that is way off course, it really is. And so I think we have, we're giving you guys pretty good direction, is that it feels like that we want people to comply, we don't, we want people to have the options to comply, so we don't want, we don't want them just to be pulled back, and we want you guys to have a good policy that's modern, that meets, you know, the era that we're in, like you said, we're in a different era than we were in 2008. So we want to give you that option.
I think if we're going to allow somebody to use our logo, then it has to benefit the City of Gilroy.
Great, that's a great point.
Mayor, council, we have a public comment?
Yep.
Okay. So Maria Agula?
Thank you.
So I'm hoping that when you do create a program, that you will consider the grassroots nonprofits, because they're working for the community and I didn't know we could use the logo, I would love to do that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any last comments? Again, we're not taking action, it seems like you guys have direction, okay? Thank you very much, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 11, future council-initiated items, we have none, and item number 12, city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I myself have a very short report, I did want to let council know that the Gilroy Recreation Department received about 13,000 grants through the Gilroy Foundation Designated Fund. Those grants go towards senior programs, the Dog Park Designated Fund, youth scholarships, and also for family investments in youth. So that's always a good thing when we can get some grant money. The second part of report I have on 12-1 is, I will forego the San Antonio Fire Station update until next meeting, when I will give you an update on both the fire station and the integration of county fire into the South County Fire District, I'll do that at the May 5th meeting. The last part is a quick media training for elected officials that Rochelle is going to do, as many of you are still getting used to your seats and your new positions, you've had media encounters, and we have a few tips and a few pointers for you as you continue on and discuss items with the media. Thank you, Rochelle.
All right, good evening again. This one's pretty quick and straightforward, so we'll get going, we should make it through pretty easily. This training provides a consistent approach to guide council and staff in managing our response to the media. As I'm sure you well know at this point, media often contacts our elected officials to get opinions or to get statements regarding actions taken by the city. So with that, in our city charter, the city charter states that the mayor shall be recognized as the official head of the city for all political, representative, and ceremonial purposes, by the courts for the purposes of serving civil processes, and by the governor for military purposes. In short, this is a section of the charter that names the mayor as the spokesperson for our city. And so as the spokesperson, the mayor is responsible for serving as the official representative of the city, and also responsible for communicating key messages in a way that is clear, credible, and aligned with council and city goals and direction. Some of the news outlets that we receive media inquiries from most commonly are the Gilroy Dispatch, San Jose Mercury News, CBS, NBC, KCBS, Telemundo, and the Silicon Valley Business Journal. So what to do when the media contacts you? We've broken it down really simple. If the media representative is looking for your opinion, actually, I take that back, this slide is if they're looking for information about the city or a response of the city. So for example, they're looking about, looking for detailed information about a project, they want to know what the city has to say to the community about something, or a statement on a particular issue, those types of media inquiries should be forwarded to the Communication Engagement Manager, myself, and then I will work with the city administrator to find the appropriate person to respond to those types of inquiries. Oftentimes, when they're looking for detailed information about a project, we're going to be working with the person working on that project who has that detailed knowledge to help us put an answer together for them. If they're looking for a statement on what the city has to say about something, the city administrator and I are going to be working together to craft a statement that reflects a comprehensive overall view as opposed to an individual view or an individual opinion about a specific project. So in those cases, that's why we asked that you forward those media inquiries to myself so that we can work on fielding those and finding the right person to respond to those. If the media contacts you and they're looking for your opinion, so as they're asking as a council member, how do you feel about, or why did you vote in a particular way, we just ask that you remind the reporter that your statement does not represent that of council as a whole, nor is it an official statement of the city, and then you can provide your opinion to them. When you're speaking with a reporter, just assume that everything's on the record, they can use pretty much anything you say to them, so even if they tell you it's not on the record, or you're having casual conversation before they get into their questions, assume that everything you're sharing with the reporter is on the record because they can use it in their articles or their stories. So if you can't say it on the record, don't say it, and then again, refer the reporter to the Communication Engagement Manager for any questions pertaining to the city. When, once we receive a media inquiry, whether it be something that's forwarded by you or it's one that we receive directly, I will work with the city administrator to assess a possible response. The things that we're looking at is topic urgency, situational need, community need, a pro-con analysis of a response, really just looking at holistically to make sure that whatever response we provide provides a benefit to our community and our organization as a whole, rather than just providing a response that may not be beneficial. The types of responses that we typically provide would be written, written is our preferred method of responding, it gives us a way to kind of track what information we've provided to a reporter. We do also provide on-camera or live phone interviews, oftentimes, these would be, we'd be working with the spokesperson or the mayor in those types of responses, but if needed, staff could also provide that on-camera, live phone interview. And that's my media training, thank you, and just as a reminder, don't say anything that shouldn't be included in a news story, if you can't say it on record, don't say it.
I had something too, from experience, a lot of them are very crooked, and they will take something you said a year ago, a quote about something totally different, and they'll put it in there, and you'll, somebody will call you and go, you said that? And you're like, I didn't talk to anybody, and they're quoting you. So you, I don't talk to them at all, that's the best way, thanks.
Okay, moving on to item number 13, city attorneys' report.
No report.
Okay, item 14, excuse me, we have no closed session, so moving on to item 15, 16, adjournment. Thank you, everybody.